Yeah, okay.
That's how he talks.
Cool story.
Why are you screaming at me like?
I'm screaming? You wanna hear screaming?
Yes!
You wanna hear screaming?
Yes!
No.
Okay, well, why did you ask that?
Uh... Why not?
Hmm...
Usually Sil's very late, so...
I'm usually still being late.
But, not now.
Yep.
It's kind of a thing.
I'd be laughing if you took a nap again.
I would be too. I'd be quietly strangling him too.
Uh-huh!
And not in a good way either.
Hey, I guess they'll leave. Fuck off once I get to work tonight.
What'd you just call me?
What?
What'd you just call me?
Nigga!
Aw, thanks, man. You're so rad, dude.
Good story.
I always knew I had the N-word pass in secret.
Oh.
Alright, what? Aw dang, they even, they even fixed the max speed sections for Sonic 06. That's pretty cool. Oh yeah, I forgot the spam theory. It's different now, wow. I have a copy just in case.
Please give it up!
For now. If there was a response soon, he's getting a buttload more. He's getting the wealth treatment.
Oh god.
Yo! I'm fucking listening to the OST right now!
Are you serious?
Fucking yeah!
Luigi's Mansion?
Hell yeah!
That is hysterical. Man, that one song they have is really good.
So good.
They actually have like, what, six songs? I don't actually know how many. They don't have that many. But...
They have exactly sixty-four.
Wow, seriously? The only ones that come to mind aside from the obvious one are the menus.
A lot of them are-
Yigad.
Yeah, a lot of them are not even more than like two minutes or under two minutes.
Yeah, like the one that comes to mind most is just Yigad, the bosses, and when you're fighting a ghost. Oh, and Booze, I guess. That's about it. Same things that come to mind. Aside from that, not much. I'm glad you joined Silly, you were about to get the wealth treatment.
The what? I came in on half of that.
Uh, I'm glad you came in because you were about to get the wel- the wealth treatment.
Okay. Had a fucking Easter dinner I had to go to, so...
Ooh, did you enjoy it?
Yup!
Very nice!
No Easter dinner for me. I even forgot it was Easter that everything was supposed to- I had to bang next door for food.
Oh, sweet!
Wait, you had to go next door?
Well, my neighbor, who's like my ex-girlfriend, I had to go ask him for food.
What did they say?
They gave me food.
Aww... Those are souls.
Yup. Doesn't matter to me because I don't work Sundays, so...
I don't work usually this Sunday!
Ow. Normally I work Sundays, but not today. But hey, Joker from Smash is out.
Yeah. If only it was able to come out on the day it was supposed to.
It did, uh, if you were lucky.
Yeah, if you, if you got lucky! If you, if you were fortunate enough to not have to deal with the fucking server errors.
I was lucky after an hour and a half.
Yeah, I saw you waiting there. I, like, I checked my switch the first time, and then I went back like two hours later, I was like, "This motherfucker is still here."
I was checking until eventually I got it.
Oh man, I knew it, like, I sh- I figured, I figured you, like, if anybody was gonna just be sitting at his switch just waiting for this update.
To be fair, I was doing other stuff at the same time, but-
Oh sure, it's a portable console.
The entire time.
Right.
Oh no!
The stage editor, though.
Oh, it's great.
Can I just be no life?
Um, I feel blessed for the stage editor, for more reasons than I anticipated.
Oh yeah, you seen them all? You seen that fucking nine-eleven one? And that one that's just people having sex? And that one that's Pikachu's butt? And that one that's fucking Vaporeon's butt?
And Cinnaror, and Shai'gaw.
Yeah, that's just fucking, it's just, it's just porn! It's just porn artists fucking drawing shit in like, oh, in ways that try to like keep it as safe as they can, but like fucking edge that line, just fucking ride that line, and it's great. It's so good!
It's lovely.
There's one of Zero Suit Samus jerking off a dog dick, that, that's a good one.
I did not see that one.
That's probably because they didn't post that one out.
Oh, the September one, oh...
Yep, there's, there's a couple. There's good ones and there's, boy, why is this here ones?
Y'all should feel bad for that.
Hey, I didn't fucking do it! I mean, it, we can make nine-eleven jokes, now shit was, what, eighteen years ago?
Dang. I don't know how long ago.
This is funny, it just says trans rights.
Oh yeah.
There's a Konosuba one with her butt shaking, that's a go, a lot of butts, I'm digging the copious amounts.
So many.
Waluigi stage, waluigi stage!
Disgusting. Get that, there's actually, I haven't seen any of those, actually. There's some really, like legitimately creative stages out there, though.
Oh yeah.
It's too bad. It's, it's hiding underneath. The not, not good ones.
The copious amount of just memes and shitty stages.
Hey man, there's creativity in a lot of those stages, could, that fucking Aqua from Konosuba's butt is a treasure. That shit shakes!
I just used, um, a butt to spawn a smug face, 'cause I was feeling smug towards someone, and this is the shit they gave me. Not saying it's bad, smug.
I love, I love. Let me some smug Wendy's.
Wendy's Girls good.
Sil, you need to be in row twenty, sir.
Alright, where's the...
Where's the Easter shit? Uh, too many dragons.
Oh, we're just doing it in that one, okay.
Yeah, it's, it, I'm pretty much just slotting the two things together because Wells has needs to do it too, and we don't have that kind of time. And I imagine this could go by fairly quickly.
Probably.
So... I can't wait for the hilarity to, hilarity to ensue.
So are we playing our characters or are we doing something else?
Yeah, what's going on? Explain, sir. Explain yourself before us.
Cause boy are we in a very specific situation that, I don't know, unless you just throw a portal at us and throw us somewhere else.
Uh, I thought you said-
That sounds like a weird thing to do.
You throw a porno at us.
Portal! Porto!
Sometimes you just gotta act on it, you know?
Whole situation becomes an orgy, it's a dream, everyone is having the same dream.
Oh my god, it's a fucking nightmare for Hazel, Hazel does not want this!
Um, to explain the situation, you are going, we, we, the idea here is that we are, or you guys are, you three specifically, are bunny folk, you know, little bunny people. And you are the best of the best when it comes to protecting the bunny, the Easter realm, from threats, uh, both cute and not cute. So the princess, uh, you guys, you know, the thing is, is like you guys are just enjoying your lives in, in this, um, in this world of Easter where it's always spring, there's eggs everywhere, everyone's having a great time, until suddenly something bad happens.
Can never be good.
It's, it goes from spring to winter in an instant. And everything is snowed over, uh, and there is, uh, lots and lots of interdimensional, uh, bullshit going on. You know, the, the realm is essentially falling apart. Because something big is here and is not supposed to be here, and so there's the, the princess, uh, sending you guys in to, to fix the situation, as you guys are the best of the best.
Oh nice.
So let me pull you over and we can get this started.
Critical hitting. We eggs?
At the top left corner.
Yeah, I know, I'm-
There's eggs, there's a-
We are-
You can choose either the-
We're bunnies!
So, so, so there's a rogue bunny, a warlock bunny, a fighter bunny, and a mage bunny.
A rogue bunny?
Can't be archer for once, Wells.
Which was the rogue bunny?
Probably the one in the shady clothing.
You wanna be, you wanna be Rogue Bunny, Wells?
I don't know. Which one is ro- is this one Rogue Bunny?
That's Rogue Bunny, yes.
Yeah, I want Rogue Bunny.
I'll be, I'll be Fighter Bunny.
Which bunny's strong?
We're gonna fight them all, woo!
Rogue Bunny's so cute.
What about you, Sil?
I'll take the one in the pajamas.
The warlock one?
Yep, the cold bunny.
Yeah. That's my boy, look at my Fiddy pajamas.
Alright, so how this is going to work is that, uh, you have three lives. And the, the only, the only kind of dice rolling we'll, we'll be, we'll be doing in here is just one d20. So just a single d20. So if you wanna do something higher than ten, it happens, if it's lower than ten, it doesn't happen.
Or-
And it, and-
A d2, I see.
Essentially. Yeah, give you, give you more wiggle room.
Okay. It's the same statistically, but okay.
Looks more fucky, alright. Either way, you, as you, as you guys are coming in here, it's still cold as fuck, you're like, you're not used to this at all, but, uh, you can see that there are like meta-dimensional rifts opening up, there's cracks in the, in reality that are appearing. It seems like everything is slowly falling apart. And you see that there are, and you see that there are kind of this weird looking blacks, black-suited, um, creatures wandering about.
I'm getting PTSD.
What, are these walls or road?
The, those are walls.
Okay. And there's just small openings, okay.
Yes.
Well, well, boys, my, uh, my ears are getting super chilly out here. We need to take care of these. I am, I am. You don't have to, but I am.
I don't know. My armor, it feels cold.
It's so chilly.
Perfect.
Hey, uh, can they, any of, uh, bleh, do any of them see us?
Uh, not yet, no.
The heck do I have?
Whatever you want.
I would suggest a sneak attack.
I want to go stelty and stabby stabby back.
That sound good idea.
Oh shit, no stelty!
Oh no!
So yeah, you, you try to sneak up on them, uh, and you try to throw whatever weapon you decide to have at that point, and it misses, it goes wide, uh, which alerts them, alerts this one.
I will take the front lines. And I will defend my friends.
Go ahead and roll that d20.
Good call, my sparkles will protect you.
Make sure you have your token selected.
Uh, mine was selected and I rolled anyway, but-
Oh, okay, nevermind. I know.
Yay! The monster's swoop.
The record enemies have one hit, so you hit them, they're, they're dead.
Oh, sweet! I like, I like one-hit KO.
We will protect our village!
Who goes west?
I love this, I love it so much.
Fucking mistake, that's my god.
Especially after I just read a post about this.
Alright, bunny rug, it's your turn.
I would try to sh- charge, uh, dish.
Uh, you, you stab it and it, yeah, you stab it and it disintegrates into nothing.
I did, buddy fam!
Very nice.
You protected us all, and he hops up and clicks his little feetsees together.
I surprised everyone.
Oh, oh, this is too much.
You love it, you love it!
So, this is too much. Alright, so what are you guys doing now?
That one looks super scary, guys, looks really powerful. We should be careful and approach with caution.
Maybe we should take care of the smaller ones first.
Uh, I forgot to mention this, uh, so the smaller enemies have one, and the, this bigger enemy here has two. So, you, you need two hits to kill the big one, and one hit to kill the small ones.
We should go for the smarter ones. But, but the smaller can gang up.
It seems we have a conflict of opinion.
You should probably write.
Okay, let's go south.
How about I try stelty, stabby stab?
Okey dokey.
Oh.
I favor.
Oh, oh no!
So yeah, you miss and you definitely alert it.
Again.
Now he's coming!
Do we keep the same turn, or do we?
Uh, roll again.
Oh, sweet!
I trip over my Fiddy pajam.
But now it updated for me, okay. Unless he did.
Oh!
Oh no!
He's so fast!
Watch your language, Missy.
Right. So at the top of the turn order, it's going to come in close, definitely come in close and say hello.
Hello!
Time to die!
Oh no!
Ouchie!
Fighter.
I will surround him and attack.
Pinch our position.
Pow! Just imagine like a squeaky hammer that actually hurts them.
Ah, my way!
You are always so brutal with your squeak hammer of justice.
I can't help it.
Hey, I givey cap and I just like high-five Fighter Bunny.
I would do that if my pajamas didn't get in the way and it's so cold.
It is really cool. Can I get in your pajamas?
Hey, what direction is this one facing?
One, uh, facing south.
South?
Should we go quill north?
Oh, he's over here.
What?
Should we go quill things north?
Hmm... We should maybe try now to approach and-
I can go up here.
Ah, wow! Maybe not so north.
North.
Let's try another sneak attack.
Yes. Um, you come in, um...
I'm coming!
I wonder who, exactly?
Wait, that's a wall, Wells!
Is that a warlock?
It's a wall!
I'm, I'm- That is a-
I don't know, roll a d20, see if you can.
No, you know the village elder says we can't go past the wall! I'm just making lore up.
I get over the wall!
She's going over the wall!
Hey, warlock buddy, fight for buddy, I is ready.
Wow, so impressive.
Yeah, I got hops. I got mad hops.
Maybe we should try. Oh, no!
Oh brother, no! You fall into snow, now you gonna catch cold!
Oh no, watch out, fight she buddy!
Are you gonna try?
I suppose so, I'll, I'll use my sparkles to boost myself over the wall.
I will do the, that's a victory for you when I start doing tiny bunny tour.
This is beautiful.
I was coughing up blood over here.
Jesus.
No!
No, no, I didn't twerk hard enough.
Is that one of those forbidden dances that my, that, that chief elder ta- warns me again?
Something about seducing the male population?
I don't know what that means.
Oh man, can we, can we just keep trying?
Go ahead!
Okay.
Nope!
Again, guys, we have three hours to kill.
That we do.
I like bunny, big ol', just one bunny hop over. Well, I felt great!
Sparkles!
Oh no!
Sparkles won't come out.
Oh no!
There we go!
On the fourth try, you get over.
Rogue Bunny gets close to you and just wipes the snow off your pajamas, oh, you, you gonna catch cold.
I'm just shaking, I'm shaking so hard.
I shall try G sneak attack.
I believe in you.
I believe! Yay!
Yay! So proud of you.
We're doing it!
I, I clap, clap Matt Hops around. He's shaking my bunny butt.
I want you guys to know that, canonically speaking, these bunnies are stronger than our characters.
Oh, oh, look, another.
Wanna try again?
I wanna try sneak.
Whoa, that move! Actually, what is this supposed to be?
No, no, that was me, guys, I'm sorry. I did that by accident.
Alright, cause you're leaving.
Is it tennis, a success or failure?
It is.
It is a success, and stop moving my shit!
I'm sorry, I was trying to grab my butt, it's a big hitbox on that. You a cold-blooded killer!
My mama told me how to do that.
Uh, the way to go is east.
Uh, okay.
We leaving bit baddie bad?
Yeah, I don't want to fight. I don't want to fight.
Pajama, pajama bun bun.
Hello?
Alright.
Did you just ooh woo? Did you just ooh woo? Alright, we're there, fellas, we've made it.
You got snow on the back of your head, and I just wiped it.
Oh, many thankys. I take out a little marshmallow and I nibble on it.
Of course, of course.
How real is the cancer right now?
Alright, give me a minute here.
Wow, we're going so fast.
Alright, let's see, guys, I'm gonna consider there fucking yeah. We'll move you over here. Right over here.
Nice. The heck are these?
These.
Okay. We go through them like underneath?
Is that an enemy?
Looks like it.
She's scary.
Scary.
Can I sneak attack the enemy?
Sure.
Don't sound too excited. Oh my god. I was wondering if you were typing.
Oh no. I poked I poked the rocks pot.
Oh, no good.
They look so squishy and swamy and gross.
Yeah, it looks like you get wet if you touch it.
You.
That's a wude.
Whoa, wude.
Uh, you have no idea what it is.
So it's not attacking?
Oh, that's what you know of.
I attempt to call on our ancestors' spirits to find out the origin of these. I find out nothing.
Absolutely goddamn nothing.
I tried the same.
None of you know.
Tried the same, oh.
Even worse.
We shouldn't have fallen a sweep when when they were teaching us this stuff.
But the yummy dreamy ca- dreamy carrots, uh, carrots.
Yummy carrots.
If only the books weren't so boring and they taught me more Spocko attack.
Don't you have big ex- ex- explosion spells?
Oh yeah, the boom boom magics.
Why, why?
I was fucking drunk.
Oh no, the boom.
This is quality content, you guys.
I can't wait until Tired hears this.
Boom boom magic, what the fuck though?
What? That's what we call it.
Boom boom magic?
The the magic that makes the Batman go boom.
No, oh should I try pokey pokey and do a hooky pokey?
We we should try the boom boom magic first.
Boom boom magics.
Who do we? We 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 want me to attack this guy? Is that it?
This one, right?
Okay.
Tentacle monster.
Okay.
I once heard Jeffy Bill Bunny talk about tentacles. She always bad. Something about pilgrimage.
Hmm.
It'd be rude.
Pale bitch, what?
Yes, pale bitch.
Our wife, he'll goes, he's hoping he goes big. Kapowee.
He go, he goes boom.
There's blood and viscera everywhere.
Yes, lots of it is is just engulfed in flames.
Oh my god.
Wow, you boom boom magic strong.
Papa always told me I had big fire inside me and I should make many babies.
Oh shit. Mama always told me I was weird.
Somebody once told me that the world is gonna own me.
Was she looking kind of dumb with her finger in her thumb?
Yeah.
I think our bunny god is having a heart attack. Get the devolverator.
Watch out. The god is gonna make torture. No. I once heard our species was half Scottish. Did you know that?
I told you.
Give me.
Oh man, alright. Onward, we must vanquish these foes and protect our village.
Yes, protect the Easter realm.
Wanna wanna go long for kids them all? Okay. We could wear full.
Go get your close pitch helmet.
Boom boom magic time.
What's boom boom magic?
Here goes. No, hard feel.
Oh no.
My hands just make marshmallows come out of them.
Oh, they wish it's marshmallows.
Try sticking my sticky stick in his tentacle stick. I'm gonna try poking the stick with my rabbit knives.
That's one.
So nice, let me try. Oh no. I missed my heavy squeaky hammer.
I will try the rabbit. Pokey pokey.
You must you must use your special no- your special noise.
Special rabbit knives, the carot knife.
You killed it so hard.
It evaporated.
Just love us talking like this and every time the camera panel is on us, this fucking magical music plays. And then when we kill something, we just hear awful screams and blood everywhere.
I just have a tap all the way here and I do it. Back foot victory.
Yay.
Blah 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 blah.
Let's continue onward.
My mom told me I had the power to do anything I wanted.
Yay.
Oh, what is this, ooh?
It's some sort of space barrier of some kind.
Hmm.
Ooh.
Looks dangerous.
You wanna touch it, fight it?
No.
It looks dangerous and unnatural.
Scary.
Let me see if I can cut my way through with some of my, some of the uh, ancient magics. Uh, and he winks above you, he says, ancient magics I read in the forbidden book. Don't tell Poppy.
Okay.
She quit, we'll keep.
Oh no, fuck me. I'm having a bad day, you guys.
I grabbed one of the shitty rotten cowadagis and threw it through.
Do what?
One of my shitty rotten cowadagis and throw it through.
Disappears.
Well, that's gone.
Oh no, my rotten bunny tag is gone.
By the powers of the ancient ones.
What is the name of the fuck?
Hey, language.
I call upon the ancient ones to open the path.
It's in the path. Opens in the other direction, so it opens north.
Okay, I stare at it for a long time and I goes, guys, it didn't work again. I'm getting super sad.
Why? Oh, ooh, look, north.
What?
Yeah.
The path is open.
Let's go.
Oh, big baddie bad. Where's your boom boom stick? Boom boom magics?
Oh wait, here goes.
What what god?
What? Who's the what god?
Yes, what she said.
No way.
Oh no, I called upon the wrong god.
I don't know any what god.
On the he's like, yo, what up?
Yo, what up? I won't.
She won't.
How howdy.
Do what she want.
Poor ass.
We the we the bunny protectors of this realm and you all look super scary. We just very 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 cautious of you.
Please go home.
A little retard's called me.
Go home, please.
What was that? Did she attack it?
No, it's a persuasion.
Oh, that's a persuasion.
Alright, whatever you little retards, and he leaves.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll call you later. Bye bye.
She the bird. Moving on.
Alright.
So which one vanished, this one?
Tell me.
I thought I thought that was the one that was talking to us.
Oh. It was the water god.
It was a water god?
You called upon the water god, not the blood god.
Oh yeah, I called upon the wrong god.
Oh, oh, I didn't know it was actually a thing.
Yeah, I actually called upon the wrong god.
Oh god, I didn't know that.
She have a body, try calling the blood god again.
I'm gonna be real, I'm gonna be real. I didn't know it. I didn't know what I was talking about either. I thought we were talking to this thing too. I thought we were talking to that thing too. Oh fuck, man, we could have used the water god to kill it.
I agree.
Somebody the blood god.
Oh no.
I believe when you. Do whatever that is.
My mama told me never to be retarded.
My mama told me never to be retarded.
Oh no.
Oh man, okay, I I call upon, this time I call upon the giant, the giant bunny god to step on this man and it worked.
Yay.
Oh.
Right.
What for the blood god?
No, not the blood god, the where it gone.
But look at all the blood.
Yes.
That that one right there.
Yes.
Lock that down.
Equivalent exchange, bitch.
Whoa.
Suddenly, a giant foot comes down from the sky. A massive rabbit's foot comes down from the sky and crushes it.
Yay, rabbit's foot, we're wucky.
Do rogues have magic?
Uh, I think it's certain levels rogues can have magic.
Hey, this is this is whatever you want to be.
That too.
This is dangerous. Wait for me.
Oh, another big blood. I want to use the secret forbidden arts, shh, of the rogue bunnies and drop a giant dagger on top of this bad boy. Oh no.
I got Naruto over here.
The hidden rabbit village.
Oh no, where did my child dagger go?
Nothing happened. Descend upon you.
Oh no.
You roll initiative.
They're all looking at us.
Oh no.
Oh no, mine is too slow right now, fighting hoodie.
I feel full of wash up wizard.
You should do more exercise like dish. Do more flip flips, move the legs.
I use my energy to climb the wall.
And I flip on my head, boom.
Boom.
Let me try.
Too foul.
Your turn, so.
Alright. So who's, yeah, okay, so we're we under attack, I will summon forth my magical pet snake Ralphie to bite this man's head off. Come forth, Ralphie.
What the hell are you doing?
I'm summoning a magical snake from another realm who I call Ralphie, who I've had talks with in the past. He's my one of my best friends, my best summons, to bite this creature's head off.
Right. This one?
Yes.
Oh my god, that's a, that's a big swig. A snakey snake.
Good job.
Yay, snake. Yay, snake friend.
I love you Ralphie.
Snake gives you a tails up.
Yay.
And onward.
So
The
I want to draw upon the power of the bunny god and summon an infinite amount of blades to throw at this motherfucker right here. Unlimited blade works, yay!
What kind of bunny do we worship?
Oh man. Our bunny's nothing to fuck with, yo, our bunny is nothing to fuck with, do not fuck with our bunny god.
Our bunnies are canonically stronger than our character.
I messed up my flick.
Oh no.
Oh no!
I swear to god, well, for every time you woo woo, I'm gonna fucking die. I'm gonna fucking, I'm gonna fucking pass out, I swear to god.
Is it one of the enemy's turn?
Yeah, but they're not fast enough.
They approach in a pincer technique.
Oh no, he's so close.
And does one to you.
Ouchies.
And bops you on, bops you on the head.
Well, I don't like.
Rub, rubs your head, rubs your head in, in pain.
At least I have my helmet. Hang on, I think I'm gonna pick up this one and toss him into this one. Use my all powerful hands of fluff.
Remember to not overexert yourself.
Yay, it worked.
Man, are we the bad guys?
Blood for the blood god!
I still don't know who died in.
Didn't you know that the bunny god carries a giant red bloody egg with him and it drips blood everywhere?
Where'd the other one go?
I'm not saying anything.
Oh, he's just gone, they went away.
I want to try and see what happened to the bad boy. Oh, I don't know what happened to the bad boy.
Can I see? No, I didn't see him, I was too focused practicing my throws.
Maybe pajama wizard knows?
Do you know?
I open my third, I access my third eye, and I seek to look into the possible dimension to where he could have gone. Ow, damn it, it won't open, I'm too tired.
Well, guess we better go north.
Yeah, best we better go north.
So you had north.
To the north, Daenerys Targaryen waits for us.
The dragons, look at the dragons!
The dragons? I thought they were wagons.
I'm always wanting to ride the bunny dragons!
The bunny dragons. Holy crud!
Oh, it's a tower tentacle.
It's big.
It's a giant, badly bad.
No bueno.
Oh, what's this? What?
You have done well to reach me.
What? What's going now?
Your fate is sealed.
Like the peanut butter jar?
What, what? No, no.
Peanut butter jar, too tight.
It's mine.
No, this realm belongs to the people and the bunnies, and that, but not those dumb foxes that try to eat us, fuck those guys.
Yeah, those aren't very nice.
I, I think you are a very, very, very bad guy. And everything inside me tells me you should die. So, I ask our bunny lord to give me the power to borrow the power of the king Gilgamesh.
Gilgamesh! Gilgamesh! Chotomate, chotomate, hold up.
I want to unleash all the blades on you!
You what?
I summon the power of Gilgamesh from fate's day and night and unleash his blade, that, all the blades he's ever created.
Right, that one.
Oh my god.
He's good. Alright, that was a serious, that was a good attack. That was a really strong attack, but he seemed so powerful.
Oh goddess happy!
No, it isn't.
Can you leave now, or I will pokey pokey hurt you and scratch you more.
You can certainly try.
He is a bad guy! Blood god requires more blood!
Oh no, we, we have exhausted ourselves, we need to get height weighted.
What if, what if we use all of our turns for one super mega attack?
Oh no!
Hey, if you wanna do it, go ahead, be my guest.
We should do it.
It's definitely going to strike first, so.
That's okay. Why okay, not okay?
It just kinda just stands there and writhes at you.
Shall we summon our super powers?
Yes.
Yes, we must become our bunny god.
We shall become one and defeat evil upon the eastern realm!
My, my eyes go back into my head and I say, now hold still while I summon and fuse us with his powers. Now, but once we get to my turn, which is in a minute, so you go first.
Oh no! I can't use enough godly energies.
She's gonna wait another turn.
Shaveish pajama wizard.
Put your, put your arm over his throat?
You know, I used to think I was above this. I used to. I'm not, I'm fucking trash, yo, I love
I have never done this in my whole life and I don't know how I feel about hearing myself back on stream later.
I'm not watching.
You will, you will, because I will clip it and highlight it and put it all over this channel.
God damn it.
Beautiful.
Silver!
Wait, isn't this silly's turn?
No, I go west, I'm so tired.
I'm gonna try and summon our rabbit god. Yo.
All of this are feeling.
Alright, here goes. Bunny god, give us your eternal essence and your powers to vanquish our foe. God damn it!
It, it says, no, fuck you mate.
Oh, her feelings.
I didn't know our god was British. I wanted East Scottish god.
The quip of your ass cheeks was too powerful.
Wait, who's turning?
I hope the quip of my ass cheeks can shimmy shore. I'm sorry, but my mama always told me I was dummy chick.
You, you was getting clapped, alright?
Oh no! Oh god, oh fuck.
Take one. You was getting clapped.
The clap of my ass cheek wasn't strong enough.
Your turn well.
I summon the pointy power of this Scottish bunny god.
Oh no!
He's just trying to ignore us.
Wait.
I hope he responds to me this time.
Is it my turn, brother?
Yeah.
Okay, yay! Let's push this into north.
Two.
What's that?
It's two hits.
Yay!
It's not dead yet, by the way. So, so?
Alright, be that way, Ralphie, get in here please. Damn it, he's too tired and he's full now.
Oh no!
Oh jeez.
Boy, I'm just But my ass cheeks are bony, that's why I wear these pajamas.
Don't worry, mama told me I was dummy sick, I can try and shimmy with the clap of my ass cheeks. Come to me, scry, bunny god, and I clap harder.
Oh my god!
Alright.
Oh, what's this?
I don't know. Alright, Huff, we have summoned a Scottish bunny god, I guess, to hit this thing.
I'm about to pee my pants, oh shit!
I love that she's gotta go into another room to, to fucking, to Oh, that's right, I forgot she pees with the door open.
So, you win.
Oh wait, we vanquished him.
Yay!
You, you, you vanquished the being. Casting up, but the still open. So what do you do to close it?
Since ass cheeks worked last time, they will work this time. Eternal bunny lord, I call upon you with a new seat. I realize that your previous one was quite wickedy, take this one that has eternal softness.
For your sensitive tushy.
God damn it! Somebody, somebody get him on the phone, he won't listen to me.
Let me try, let me try.
There you go, now get, get your, get your ass out here, sit on this, this good chair. Deep breaths, deep breaths. See a butt come out of the sky?
Fucking, no, 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 you see a butt come out of the sky? It goes into his ass. It disappears into his ass as he goes back into the sky.
Thank you bunny god.
I clap my ass cheek in victory!
Yay!
Clap, 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 bunny thick.
Clap, clap!
I don't know what I'm doing.
I, my head is stuck in the stone, I'm clapping up. Clap, clap!
Man, you know, Karope got more adult as time went Oh fuck, so what happens?
So, what ends up happening is in the end, our heroes save the day. The realm returns to to normal with spring returning to normal, you guys fall into the water and, uh, drown to death. In a valley that they'll swim to the surface, as bunnies cannot swim.
You're doing so well!
You, you bitch, you bitch!
You're just mad, you're just mad because we're talking.
Ah, dude, I think the clap of my ass cheek didn't make me swim.
Oh no, your ass cheek was perfect floating device, what happened?
Ah no!
I thought we were swaying.
I gargled as I, as I screamed, blood, blood, blood god!
We will come again.
Oh no.
Ralphie saved
That was the Easter special.
Alright, woo, yay!
Great success.
What the fuck was that? Did you have a dream me trying to summon fucking Gilgamesh and unlimited blade works?
Unlimited blade works.
You said I was a rogue and I had the power to do what I wanted, so I chose a two fate's day night character that had all the swords.
Right, oh man, I should've summoned Esthalfa, shit.
I like tossing someone, so I'm okay with that.
Oh, that was great, I love Oh fuck. I love that everybody joined in with me with the film.
Hell yeah.
I'm sorry, but this will be recorded forever.
Good.
It will live on.
It will live on.
Good. Can't wait to share with my friends.
Don't forget to like and subscribe.
The tale will never die, Soul Calibur 6.
Thank you, tide.
Oh boy.
Wanted to shake myself so hard.
We've got, we've got your laughs recorded, buddy, buddy boy.
I wanted to murder myself so damn hard.
Out of laughter.
Because of the fucking stupid ass shit!
You know you love it.
You love it! We were in character.
You wanna die because you love it.
Shouldn't be laughing at this shit, but I am.
It's great.
Good shit. Every fucking time Wellsper, oh woo, oh woo, what's that?
Oh no.
But yeah, that, that's, that's the Easter special session. Fun.
I had fun.
That's what, that's what we all plan to do here. At SMD here, we'll be trying to have as much fun as possible, even though I want to die inside during all of it, um.
Hell yeah.
It's fun. This is cheese. This is the day of reincarnation, baby. You die so you can come back better than ever, beto than ever.
Yay.
Enjoyed our sacrifices. More blood for the blood god.
This was just fucking cancer.
I agree with Chi here.
Uh, you don't like this Scottish lord?
I shouldn't have made this cantor, I shouldn't have made this cantor in the first place.
Hey, where did you, where did you, for real though, where'd you get those little bunnies? Those little bunny thing?
I.
Sounds like the acid stove.
On the marketplace. It's called, um. I think it's called generic Easter. Oh, you say?